Yeah. It's okay, we're having a smooth day.
So we're so much.
About three more minutes and then we will go ahead and get started. So make your schedule very clear.
Are you all lined up?
They are.
They are. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. I'm gonna start with a very short introduction to just who these lovely people are and what positions they are attempting to go for at our vote on the seven. Patrick is our first one. He is currently our president of the school board. He is running at large this term. He's running for a two-year term and there's one position available, which means that he's technically running unopposed. The next five candidates are running for a four-year term at large, so anyone across our district can vote for them. There are two positions open and this is a four-year term. First, we have Shannon Boham, Dawn Gibson, Melissa Cooper, Cody Dyer, and Jim Tom-Lon... Tom Lottavick. I'll get it down to my promise. The next we have is District One. These are a two-year position. We have one position available. Run off between Kendra Perry and Benny Brandt. District Two has three candidates for one position. This is a four-year term. Mardell Tom-Lottavick, Jennifer Everett, Ashley Van Shor. And last but not least, Mary Coulter is running for District Three. This is a four-year term, one position, so she is running unopposed. The Jasper County Tribune has started doing some bios of some of our lovely candidates and there should be more of those to come. Please keep an eye on those. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer their question. Just trying to keep things going. Hopefully, we can get you guys out of here in a reasonable amount of time, but we also want you to be very informed going in to make these decisions. So, our first question is, what motivates you to want to be on the Colfax-Mingo School Board? Patrick, I'll start with you.
Thank you. I think the best school boards are the ones with diverse perspectives. So, some with children in the district right now, some with maybe elementary, some with junior high, some that don't have any kids right now. They bring the most perspectives to our decision-making as a community and school district. So, some of the things that motivated me, I have children at the elementary and at the junior high. I've been on the board for six years. I've been a part of the stadium project and I really wanna see that completion and see our community get to use that in the coming years. So, that's my main goal for staying on for the next couple of years.
Awesome. Thank you, Patrick. Shannon, what motivates you to want to be on the Colfax-Mingo School Board?
Alright, hi everybody. First, I just wanna say thank you for coming out. It's really important for the community to come out and do these things, so I'm glad that everybody's here. And if you wanna talk afterwards, I'd be happy to do that. So, what motivates me is, I have four kids, so obviously, this is personal for me. I've got kids from kindergarten up to seventh grade, so across both schools, and it's monumentally important to me that they have a good education, that they have the best start that they can have as they go into the next step of their life. Filling in on the school board over the past, since March, so about six months or seven months, I have found, you know, that I really have a passion for all of the kids getting the best education, the athletics, the best experience that they can get, and that's the beauty of a small school, is that we are able to have our kids be involved in many, many things at a small school, but I want those things to be, you know, top-notch. And so, personally, I'm ready for changes in some things, and that's not to say that it's all bad. I think that there's so many good things, but we have so many things that we can build upon, and what motivates me is to really see, you know, the best that we can see out of our leadership, the best that we can see out of our athletics, to utilize the athletic facilities that we have. And I bring a lot of leadership experience from my, um, my past job in corporate world, leading large teams, and I hope to use that influence on large groups to be able to make that change happen.
Awesome. Thank you, Shannon. Um, let's see. What motivates you to be on Sam's School Board?
Good evening, everybody. So, for me, kinda like Shannon, it's the kids. When I ran four years ago, I had three kids in the district, and I loved getting a chance to speak with them and get their perspective of what we were doing, how it impacted them. I want them to have the best opportunities, male role, and education, athletics, music, arts, anything that they're passionate about, I want us to be able to improve on. I grew up a child of an administrator, so I know a lot of the behind-the-scenes things that go on, and I have access to a lot of resources. That just kinda helps me know where to go if I have questions. I'd love to continue on the board for the next four years. I know we have a lot of challenges ahead of us. I think we've done a great job highlighting our strengths in our district, and the families have been responding, and we've got some growth coming on, and I think that's really exciting. And so, I'd love to look at facilities, and then I'd also like to see us improve our test scores and attendance, and look at our mental health of our students as well.
Shannon. Melissa, what, um, what motivates you to join the Sam's School Board?
Um, like everybody else, I have a child in this school district. I have three mothers in different school districts. But I, I just want to be more involved in the community. I wanna help Colfax grow and have great sports and arts and all that fun stuff that the kids get to do in their extra time. I just want to help.
Cody, what motivates you to run for Sam's School Board this year?
Well, I'm perhaps in the newest citizen here. We moved here just over a year ago. So, I think it's important to be a part of the community and the decision-making process, and just be active and involved for this, ensuring the safe platform and the educational system for the kids, for the teachers, for the staff, and then be a voice for the parents and, uh, connect that bridge through being on the school board.
Thank you. Jim, what motivates you to join the Sam's School Board this year?
I have three grandchildren currently living in the district. One's in third grade, the other one's in preschool, and granddaughter is two. And my goal is to provide the best education for all the students in our district. And my second main goal is to improve board communication with the community members by being accessible and accountable.
Thank you, Jim. Kendra, what is motivating you to join the Sam's School Board again?
Um, I am motivated to be on the school board because I love this school and I love this community. Um, it's been my home all my life, growing up in Colfax and then living in Mingo as an adult. Initially, I wanted to serve on the board to be a voice for Mingo, as our area was feeling kind of disheartened and unheard, um, and I felt that I still feel that I have a unique perspective with living in both communities and, um, holding both very near and dear to my heart. I have three of my own kids and lots of family with kids in the district as well, so I obviously want, um, the best for them as well.
Thank you, Kendra. Benny, what is motivating you to join the Sam's School Board this year?
Good evening, everyone. I see myself as an advocate for students, for parents, and for teachers, to be able to have the best education, to elevate the education that we currently have, to build on that, and to be able to draw in other students due to elevating our educational standards here. We've put a lot of money and attention into sports. I think we need to keep the amount of dollars and effort into education, having our reading and our writing scores. To keep the reading and writing, you can do absolutely anything. I'm a very vocal supporter of high school, like wrestling, if you've ever met with me. I, I do support the sports very strongly, and I just wanna see the very best for our kids, and I wanna read to you and our community.
Thank you, Benny. Mardell, what is motivating you to join the Sam's School Board?
My purpose on seeking another term on the Colfax-Mingo School Board is to give something back to our community and students. And my previous experiences on Sam's School Board have allowed me to contribute and accomplish goals that will affect the future of our school and students. I want to continue my work on the board to achieve the results that I started to accomplish.
Thank you, Mardell. Jen, what motivates you to join Sam's School Board?
I have, um, two daughters in the elementary, because they're my primary motivation. I also started volunteering in their classrooms last year, helping the kids read their reading and math. So, obviously, I want the best for all of the kids in the community, but the primary goal is that my, you know, that my kids are successful and get the, the most out of their education here at Colfax-Mingo.
Thank you, Jen. Ashley, what motivates you to join Sam's School Board this year?
Thank you, Lindsay. Um, what motivates me and why I want to be on the school board is my three children. They're kind of one of the same, right? I've got three kids, um, that are all in school here. I've got a senior, an eighth grader, and a second grader, so I've got all age ranges. We're gonna be in school for a while. Um, but as a mother of these three students, I feel called to represent a voice of common-sense decision-making and direction for our students' education. I believe the school board should represent a broad range of voices within our community. It represents not just the voices of those who sit on the board. In recent years, it has become more evident the power a school board has in choosing the direction and policies by which our students and staff are governed. I wholeheartedly believe our district would benefit from a fresh perspective and insight from someone who has a stake in the game with children in the district of whom the decisions made by the school board directly impact. I take pride in volunteering and am passionate about preparing our children for the future, sending them off into the workforce in the real world, or with a quality education. As a paralegal, I specialize in government. I believe I will bring a different perspective to the board, a deep analytical skillset and the ability to collaborate, communicate, and effectively solve issues.
Thank you, Ashley. Mary, what is motivating you to join Sam's School Board?
I think it's my love of attending the school board meetings. Actually, I'm a retired school administrator, so I've been to almost thirty years' worth of board meetings. So, I think my perspective is, I really know what's what and what's going on, and I felt like I wanted to give back to the community. My husband retired after being a teacher and coach here for thirty-five years. I have three children that are graduates, have gone on to have great success in what they're doing with their lives, so it's my chance to give back. I want to continue the good things that we're doing. I love this sports facility. That was a long time coming. We've got great facilities. Just last week, um, somebody from the State Board of Iowa Association of School Boards came out and went on a tour, and it was so nice to have an outsider's perspective, and he was very impressed. We went through all the buildings, went up to Mingo, so I wanna continue working with that.
Thank you, Mary. So, it sounds like we've got a lot of really passionate people here tonight, and so I'm really excited to see what more they have to say. Um, so, we're gonna mix it up a little bit. Patrick, I'm not starting with you. You get to bring up the tail this time. Um, Shannon, what do you think is the role of a school board member?
Yeah, so, I think pretty plain and simple, the role of a school board member is to represent the students and provide the best education possible for students, and I think that sometimes that might mean that you make a decision that's for the best of the district and the community, even though, um, you know, maybe it's something that you haven't thought of, or, you know, that you didn't initially support, but it's for the best for the district. And so, I think it's our responsibility to balance, you know, we all have kids in the school, but that doesn't always necessarily mean, like, we have to think about all the kids and not just ours, and so, I think that's really important, and, um, provide the best education for all the kids.
Thank you, Shannon. Dawn, what do you think the role of a school board member is?
So, I think a lot of times, the community has one idea of what it is, but it's not. What we actually do, we do represent the community. We set policies that school follows. We hire, we support the superintendent to make sure that they are following those policies, keeping the board in board decisions. We review financial information, including all of the checks being written each month and the activity and the funds, as well as the budgets. We serve on committees to support the school, the administration. We get final approval on many decisions that are made that helps up the direction of our district.
Thank you, Dawn. Melissa, what do you think is the basis of the school board?
My answers are all really short compared to everybody else's.
That's okay.
Um, so, for me, it's someone that donates their own time to help the school function to the best of their abilities, point of contact for the public to express their concerns or achievements about the schools, students, teachers, and activities, and someone that helps each other.
Thank you, Melissa. Cody, what would you say is the role of the Colfax-Mingo School Board?
Boy, the role of a school board member is a person that wears many hats, and as that was voiced here, policymaking, approval of budgets, going over curriculum, all those things come into play, but I think the biggest thing is being a community advocate. That means a school board member must be very relational and reaching out and seeing what, uh, is happening in the community and what the parents, the families, the guardians want, or what they're needing, and then bringing that alongside. And so, it really comes down to challenges, understanding these needs, and really, it's two different people groups. It's the parents and the kids, and then coming along with the teachers and the administrators, and then getting everybody on the same page and moving toward the same goal. Uh, I think that's the biggest challenge, but I think that's what a school board member needs to be aware of and accomplish.
Thank you, Cody. Jim, what do you say is the role of the Colfax-Mingo School Board?
A school board member's role is to make decisions that provide the best education for all students. Members set goals, adopt policies, hire the administrative staff. They determine a budget for the operation of the district and make sure the administration follows board policies.
Thank you, Jim. Kendra, what is your view on the role of a school board member?
Some good answers. Um, I said, a school board member is giving direction and guidance to the administration, I think, um, along with setting the policy. I do think it's our, our role to give direction and guidance, but it's not our job to manage that from day to day, and I think that sometimes can get confused a little bit, and, um, we're not the ones implementing that stuff, so it can be difficult. But our job is also to elevate those concerns when they're not addressed and become aware of them, and with being, you know, outsiders, outside of the education system, bring an outside perspective as well. So.
Thank you, Kendra. Benny, what do you view as the role of the Colfax-Mingo School Board?
First and foremost, I don't disagree with any of the prior statements from any of the candidates that have, have come before me. What I think is also important in addition to all of that is to be able to collaborate, to be able to come to some decisions and not think that their way is the only way, and be kinda like the federal government to actually, you know, put it out there and do what's best for the kids, and we have to have some compromise in, um, either with the kids, with the teachers, and with each other.
Thank you, Benny. Mardell, what is your view of the role of the Colfax-Mingo School Board member?
School board members are to oversee the management of the district, provide support for policies, ensure financial for policies, ensure financial accountability, provide community leadership for the district.
Thank you, Mardel. Jen, what do you see as the role of the Colfax-Mingo School Board?
Very similar to what answers that are provided. Adopt policies, establish district goals, advocate on behalf of the students, improve curriculum.
Thank you, Jen. Ashley, what do you have to add to all of this loveliness of what is the role of a Colfax-Mingo School Board member?
I don't think there's anything left. Really, it's just a school board member's job to serve the community that votes for them. We're here because you put us here. Not me yet, I'll just say that. You've entrusted us to provide direction, to make sure that your kids are getting a quality education. Obviously, there's the financials, the budgeting, and all of that comes along with the job. And it's all, we're here and we do it because we love to volunteer, we love the kids, and yeah.
Thank you, Ashley. Anything else to add, Mary?
Of course. They've covered all the legal parts, but I think the personal part for me is, you have to take all the data that you're provided. You have to remember the financials, because that's so, so very important. You have to remember what the administrators are telling you, the data teachers provide you, the input parents provide you when you make your decisions. It's not just something that you personally have, but you have to look at all the data before you make those decisions.
All right, Patrick, we're ending with you. And as the current president, what else can you add to this that is your view on what a Colfax-Mingo School Board member does?
Yeah, so lots of great answers. I think it's the fiscal monitoring that is one of the big ones. So if any of you have never been to a school board, and we talk about payables, it is basically every dollar that is spent and is going, and we have to review that. We ask questions. We make sure, are we spending money where we should be? Are we putting our time and our resources where we want them? And if not, it's the school board's responsibility to work through the superintendent to set that direction and guidance. We also have an annual conference called IASB. It's essentially, one of my favorite things is going to that conference and listening to all the data about Colfax-Mingo and seeing where are we at? Do we have too much money saved in our bank? Are we spending enough? And really addressing, are we spending the most money in the right areas for our kids' education, similar to what the other candidates have said? Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, Dawn, I'll start with you this time. What do you see as current challenges facing our public schools, and what ideas do you have to overcome these challenges?
So there are countless challenges facing public schools. We have teacher shortage, willier, student behavior, attendance, funding, safety, open enrollment, just a few. But to me, it really all comes down to the public supporting and trusting the schools. Kids start acting out because they know their parents won't pay attention to what school's discipline is. Regulations or requirements are being applied to the schools all the time because people don't trust what we are or are not teaching. And people are leaving the profession because they don't have pay, they're not getting the support from the parents or the community, they don't have supplies and things like that. To me, the first step is really communication. If you're concerned about what your kids are being taught, we need to talk to each other, talk to the teachers, talk to the administrators, and find out, what are you teaching and what are they learning in the school? Parents, please talk with the administration on the student's behavior and the discipline actions that are being taken. Community members, please talk to the representatives about what the regulations are, how they're being funded, and things like that. I think we need to get out of the school versus public mentality and start working together.
Thank you, Dawn. Melissa, what would you say are current challenges facing our schools, and what do we do?
So like Dawn said, many countless items are challenges for schools. So I just kind of narrowed it down to funding. As someone who's never been on the school board before, that's where I think, that's where I focus on. So with my older kids, they go to a different school district, and they had a lot of grants that they filed for, and donations, and we're renting the facilities out, which we know we already do, by utilizing those in bigger areas than what we already do, because we already do all of those. So I would just like to focus on those a little bit more and try to even get more funding in the school for our children.
Thank you, Melissa. Cody, what views do you have on challenges facing our public schools, and how do you think we can intervene?
Well, I do think the challenges that public schools face are enormous, and from keeping and getting well-trained staff, to funding programs, to the overall moral decline that's beginning to get into our halls and classrooms. The challenge, then, is how to create a learning environment while facing those things year to year. And so addressing these challenges begins with people wanting to be here. I think that's where it starts. Why would quality teachers want to come and stay in this district? Why would students want to be here? Why would student athletes want to come? And it really all begins with support in the facilities. And so constant improvement on the facilities that's been going on is one great step. But support, support the teachers, encouragement of the teachers, is another big thing that needs to happen. And having communication, we're going to always come back to that, communication between parents and the staff and everybody working is imperative. But the moral decline of society, that's inevitable. That's coming. And making clear guidelines on what is expected from staff, what's expected from students is so important. And when staff and students choose not to follow that, the immediate consequences must be enforced, and so they will realize what's coming.
Thank you, Cody. Jim, what challenges do you see facing our public schools, and how do you think we can overcome?
As stated previously, there are many, many, countless challenges. The top three that I chose to discuss are open enrollment, retaining staff, and school safety. I believe that offering technical and skilled training classes to existing students and new students will draw open enrollment to our community. Improve physical facilities, which we have started that process, for our sports competitions, but we also need improved classrooms, classroom sizes, and technology in the classroom. And maintain our small class sizes so that teachers have the one-on-one ability to teach. To keep teachers and retain staff, give teachers the physical and emotional needs that they need to teach. And finally, make sure that all facilities are secured and all accessible by administration, staff, and students.
Thank you, Jim. Kendra, what views do you see as challenging our public movement, and how do you think we can overcome those?
Primary is financial. We don't know how some things are going to affect us that were outside of our control, like taxpayer money going to private schools instead of public schools. We have yet to see how it's going to impact us. So that's just a huge, we don't know yet. We had the extra money from COVID money, and that was excellent. We hired extra counselors, we hired extra staff, it was awesome. We provided free lunches, but that's gone now. So we have to change how we're doing that, and we're not getting the support financially to do those things. But one of the first and easiest ways I think we approach that is, we just talk more. We've gone through a lot in the last several years. We felt very divided, but I think if we concentrate on each other, then we really have more in common than we don't, and we all want the same thing, to have great lives, to have our kids have great lives, to have our community be a welcoming and fun place to be. And then beyond that, it's getting creative, it's kind of with everything, how we partner with our neighbors, with each other, to make different things work for us, and just exploring those options. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kendra. Betty, what do you see are challenges facing our public schools, and how do you think we could intervene?
I think every single day, we have different challenges that come to our doors. We don't know what these kids are experiencing. You know, they, you know, not everybody's life is equal. So I think assessing the situation, knowing your students, I think mental health is definitely something that we need to be focusing on. Grade these kids every morning, be out there in front of that school. If you see these kids day in and day out, you know what their normal behavior is, you know what's not right, you know when something's off. I'm not asking that every teacher, counselor, secretary, or janitor in the hall be a mental health provider, but they need to be able to identify it, and we need to have resources in the school year who would be able to intervene and help bring that forward so that it doesn't come to a crisis situation. And I think if we start there and encourage these kids every single day, and they know that we're there on their behalf, then I think it's going to culturally change and be a better place.
Thank you. Mardel, what are your view of current challenges, and how do we overcome?
School districts are struggling to fill vacant teaching positions and keep existing teachers from seeking new job opportunities. Administration and board members need to develop ways to keep teachers within the district by offering incentives to continue to teach the district and to address issues they face in their teaching careers. Many districts are also experiencing safety concerns with the recent school shootings across the country. Students need to feel safe in their environment. Administrators need to make sure that all access to every building in the district is restricted and monitored, and safety procedures are in effect in every building.
Thank you, Mardel. Jen, what do you view are challenges facing our public schools, and how do you think we can overcome?
I would say behavior challenges. I would like to see more support for the teachers, more of a partnership between the parents and the teachers. I also think that there are a lot of initiatives that aren't specifically academic, and I would like to see, and those initiatives become more of a distraction. I feel like there's a lot that's put on teachers' plates, and I would like to see more of a focus on academic goals and getting our proficiency levels up higher.
Thank you, Jen. Ashley, what are your views on challenges facing our public schools, and how do you think we can overcome?
Well, I would start with staff turnover. I did a lot of research reviewing candidates, and it seems like we have a lot of resignations that flood our board material. Eric Colfax has been a lot of new hires, everything, and that's every month. But aside from that, I will say, we do have some pretty great teachers in our district, some that have been here for a long time. They're very tenured. We have people, great teachers, that traveled in from other cities as well. So we must be doing something right. I just, I think we need to figure out a way to keep our newest teachers. I feel like that's where the turnover is, with all the new teachers, new staff. We've got to find a way to keep them here. We need to find out what we can do to support them in our community and in their classrooms to be successful, to make them want to stay. Also, keeping an open line of communication with teachers, parents, students, to find out how we can improve. If we don't know it's broken, we can't fix it. Another issue I find is funding. I think with the school voucher bill that is passed, and over the next several years, we'll have two types of results. Public schools will grow because of it, or public schools will suffer because of it. Which one, the Colfax, want to be? And how do we keep us from suffering from this voucher program? And honestly, I don't know the answer to that question. I think all we can do is work together as a community, as parents, the board, the teachers, the administration, or coaches, everyone just needs to step up and be involved. And another thing that we can do is, again, ask questions. What is motivating these families to want to leave from the district? If we don't ask the question, you know, it might not be an answer we want to hear, but if we don't ask the question, we won't know. And again, we don't know the issue, we can't fix the problem.
Thank you, Ashley. Mary, what do you view as challenges facing our school districts, and how do you think we can overcome?
The two that I wanted to address, number one is funding. They've said that school vouchers, well, what happens is, there's no income restrictions over the next few years. And the problem in a small district like ours, it's about $7, $800 for one student who doesn't come here. And if it all went at the same grade level, it'd be much easier to deal with. But if you lose 10 kids, that's one teacher. And unfortunately, when they're spread out all over, it makes it very difficult to staff and to keep numbers where you want. School funding has not kept up with inflation. You know, it's been two, 1%, 2%, 3% increases. So that's really hurt what is going on. What we can do is continue to lobby, go speak to your legislators, elect people that support public schools, not people that listen to outside sources that want to support private schools, because we're going to educate every child that comes through our door, every child that lives in our district, regardless of what issue addresses them, regardless of what their parents believe. And that takes money sometimes for some of those children. We're also very accountable. You'll know that public schools are, you can see anything you want with any of the money, anything. We have to be transparent. The other issue that I think is troublesome, and I've certainly seen this in my years, especially being a parent, and that's the effect of social media on children and their mental health. We can't control it. We have to educate on how to deal with that. We have to work with parents and help them know how to work with kids. But social media is an issue, and it's not the elephant in the room. It's here, it's a part of who we are. Now, what do we do, and how do we help children be successful?
Thank you, Mary. And if you don't know who our local legislators are, please just do a quick Google search. I promise you will find it. It is easy as pie to find. Patrick, what do you view as current issues facing our schools, and what do you think we can do?
Yeah, so lots of great answers, agree with all of them. I want to hit on communication. So how many of us have a cell phone and have more than three apps that they communicate with the school district or a coach, all right? To me, this is a problem, all right? We have way too many apps to communicate, so, and totally agree with Mary, she stole my answer about social media. Because it is really hard when I see things on social media attacking the school, or a teacher, or administrator. I think I read a note that it takes seven positive notes to overcome one negative comment. And the school has hardly, it is very hard to monitor all the different Facebook groups, TikTok accounts that everyone in the community, especially a small community, uses. And it's really unfair because people handle them themselves. So we need you, the community, to be advocates for our school and our social media accounts. And if someone says something that's inappropriate, let them know, tell them to take it down. But back to communication. So I do think we need to unify in our communication tools that we use to get a hold of parents, teachers, and try and make that more slimmed down if we just have too many apps that we use. Thank you.
Shannon?
Same question?
Same question.
Okay. I have to go last. So I think I'll echo a little bit of the funding. I do think it's easy to think of all of the things that are difficult about public education, but this is the situation that we're in, and I agree with Mary, you know, we need to talk to our legislators about that. But as far as funding goes, we're going to have to get creative about the kinds of things that we're looking for. There's so many grants out there that are untapped. I mean, I don't know how many times I've heard of, like, the Curry Meadows Grant, you know, money goes away because people don't apply for it, you know? So how do we get creative about how we get money for some of these initiatives? And then I'll touch again on the teacher retention and recruiting. So how do we make Colfax-Mingo the place to be? So it's hard to tailor Co County. I mean, in some ways, we can't compete with... I mean, in some ways, we can't compete with some of the benefits that they're going to have. But what we do have, I think, is more special than what they're going to get over there. And, um, you know, I want to find ways that we can incentivize the teachers that are doing a great job, that we want to stay. Um, so how do we be creative in our thinking, um, to make sure that we're incentivizing them to stay, incentivizing these new teachers to come? And, you know, help everyone in our community, you know, together to know that Colfax Mingo is the place to be.
Alright, um, thank you guys. I really appreciated those answers and I'm sure everybody else did too. Uh, so our next question is, do you have any specific initiatives that you would like to bring forward during your time on the school board? Melissa, we will start with you.
Um, so over at Crotty, um, my husband works for the school, so I hear about that at the elementary and junior high. I would like to see something go in Mingo. Growing up here, I was a school owner myself, and there's a lot of space that could be utilized there. Um, even if it was just four, six classrooms and a lunchroom, have preschool roll out there. That would open up some room on the elementary. And I think it would just, I think it'd be nice.
Thank you, Melissa. Cody, do you have any specific initiatives that you would like to take to the school board?
Uh, my short answer is, is no. And this can be a good thing or a bad thing depending on how you, how you look at it. Only being here just a little over a year limits me on my understanding of the good things the school district has done and some of the tough times. But I, I do believe this is a good thing. I come as a blank slate with fresh eyes, if you will, and I didn't grow up here, so I don't, I don't know what the historical knowledge is of all the good things that have happened. I don't know and have the historical knowledge of all the bad things. Uh, so I come with pure motives to serve this school district. Uh, I don't come with any initiatives, and initiatives can be a good thing. But I also don't come with any agendas, and agendas can be a negative thing. So I'm just coming to serve and I'll learn if you do vote for me.
Thank you, Cody. Jen, do you have any specific initiatives that you would like to take to your time as school board?
Thank you. Unfortunately, every initiative that all the board members hope to accomplish on their term costs money. So you're limited in what the things you can succinctly do. One issue that I feel strongly about is eliminating restriction in town bus route pickups for preschool and elementary children. Improve, implement morning and after school daycare. Provide after school social activities for all of our students. Broadcast live board meetings on social media so the general public can attend the meeting if not able to make the facility it's held at. And improve, initiate ways to improve Iowa school performance test, test forms. I think the last, in 2022, we were at fifty-two percent and the state average was thirty-four.
Thank you, Jen. Kendra, do you have any specific initiatives for this term on this school board?
I don't know how specific it is, but I would love to get back to our facility master plan. Our project here took way longer than it was supposed to take, so we're a little off course. Um, but that is something we're hoping to get back to in December after elections. Um, but within that, you know, we have plans. We do want to see something in Mingo. I would love, love, love to see a middle school there again. Um, we are hurting for space in both buildings right now, and that's something that we're going to have to deal with sooner rather than later. Um, of course, that comes with a big price tag again, so trying to figure out when that makes sense and what makes sense for that. Um, and also, we do have a huge need for before and after school care, um, and then potentially childcare. And that is something that we're actively talking about and hoping to work with the community and the cities on too. Um, but that is a huge need here, so that is part of that planning process too. Um, and then with the facilities plan, that also includes maintaining our spaces that we have. Um, we lost the middle school in Mingo because we didn't take care of it. So we don't want that to happen again. Um, we need to make sure that we pay attention and put the money aside for improvements when we need to.
Thank you Kendra. Betty, do you have any specific initiatives that you would like to take to the school board?
Initiatives that I would like to see forward would be to improve the reading and writing scores of our kids in elementary and junior high. One, if you can read and write, you can do anything. I would also like to see the programs continue through summer because there's a lot of loss of, of level of reading and even willingness to write and the willing to continue to do so. Um, I had a book project for a granddaughter and every day she had to write the stay in the garden. So she had to go out in the garden and write, what did the parents say to the, and this and that. Just to get that imagination going and such. Not everything always costs money. We can connect with folks who have, um, graduate students from the universities who want to come down and offer reading and writing programs through the summer or to connect and have weekend seminars and such to encourage our kids. If, if they can read and write, they can do anything. And I don't care, even if they have a disability, they can help overcome some of those disabilities. And I think we can elevate our school and encourage people to come here and want to be a part of this school system through that.
Thank you, Betty. Maradell, do you have specific initiatives for this term?
Sometimes better communication, continue to keep on top of our school's safety. Also keep students and staff safe, keep on top of learning test scores so our students can continue to excel, keep employing positive and excellent staff.
Thank you, Maradell. Jen, do you have specific initiatives you would like to take to the school board?
So I've never served on a school board, so I'm pretty naive to this whole process. But as I mentioned earlier, I would like to have more of a focus on our academic goals.
Thank you, Jen. Ashley, any specific initiatives for the school board?
Um, there's some initiatives that I kind of thought about, obviously growing and strengthening our athletic programs. We've got the foundation laid. Um, now we've got the new gym, we've got the new football stadium, we've got the wrestling room. Uh, so I'd like to see us start building those programs. Uh, and then also expanding our arts programs. Uh, there aren't really a lot of fine arts programs that they offer here. Uh, I'd like to see theater, um, art in general, anything that we can use, uh, to kind of broaden our, the student, give the students all an opportunity to be involved in something. Because not every child that walks through the door is an athlete. Uh, so we give them more opportunities to be involved with their school. Uh, and I also have the Mingo, uh, stage kind of off my list of initiatives because that would give them a place to work with some of those minor programs.
Thank you, Ashley. Mary, specific initiatives for this term?
It's one that we've talked about. In this past summer, we had a meeting with people from the city, um, talking about childcare. We are a childcare desert, which means we don't have adequate daycare. And when children turn three, we have to take them in school if they have an IEP or a specialized needs program. But we also know that, you've known neighbors, when somebody's pregnant, the next thing they do is they go, before they even tell anybody, they've got to try to find daycare. And we need before and after school care as well. So some way or other, we need to continue working with the city and try to provide that. Because we can't continue to grow if we can't have childcare. You know, it's pretty easy to take your child and drop them off at Shining Stars as you go past on 163 or somewhere else in Des Moines. But that's a big thing that I think we have to figure out to do. The problem, we need to figure out the space, you know? The city nor the school has space for that. But that's what I think we need to do in order to help us grow.
Thank you, Mary. A lot of themes I'm hearing. Patrick, what do you see as an initiative for this term?
Uh, two things. First off, better health insurance for our teachers and staff. Um, we don't offer health insurance for some of our staff members. That, to me, is wrong. Everyone should have access to that. We, we need to do better. We also, as a elementary youth sports coach, um, we can do better. And I think that it starts with making sure that our programs from top to bottom have communication and they have a guidebook on, at Colfax Mingo, at, at the varsity level, here's what we're going to do, and they're going to work with the junior high. And at the junior high, we start working down from grades and coaches. And usually you're going to get different parents, right, that are coaching? But you shouldn't walk in with a, like, a roster, and I'm usually Googling what are great drills to run, right? Like, we, we should know what are the drills, what are the teams that are working? We should pass this off and work with each other. And I think we need some better coordination. So I'd like to see our junior high coaches, working with our youth programs and coaches, make sure that we're really making a, a tunnel or a funnel for grade programs and get those built. Because it, it doesn't cost money. It costs time and coordination, so I think we can improve there.
Shannon, same question. Can I get an initiative?
Um, I think to build upon the youth sports. I mean, our participation is great. Um, we have a lot of kids out for a lot of youth sports. So how do we keep them out? How do we make sure that we have the right coaches representing our community? Um, you know, do we need a youth sports coordinator? I know that would cost money. But is that something we work towards? You know, PCM has one, I'm sure other schools around us have that. And that's how you really start to build those strong programs as they move up. Um, one of the other initiatives that I would like to talk about is CBT. We've talked a little bit about that, but investigating a school resource officer. So I want to explain that a little bit, I want it to be the right fit. I don't want a school resource officer to come in here as a negative thing to, you know, say, hey, you get in trouble, you go talk to the school resource officer. That's not what I want. I want someone who's going to come in, be a positive influence, help educate, um, be a positive interaction with law enforcement at an early age, um, for a lot of these kids. And I think that could be really beneficial for our community. Um, I think other things like, uh, career experiences, I think we have some, you know, we have a lot of like, um, video conferences where people will call in, talk about their career. Could we look into something like, um, modified internships over the summer for kids where they can go and experience jobs in real time and get that experience as they prepare for the real world? I wish I would have had something like that. Um, and then as far as childcare, I kind of want to cry when I think about how much money we spend taking, taking our kids there. So I think that would be amazing as well.
Thank you, Kendra. Dawn?
Um, we have some great teachers here at Colfax Mingo, um, including all of the ones that took the time to come here tonight. So thank you to them. I'd like to continue attracting and retaining our great teachers. But I also want us to identify and work with the teachers that maybe are not performing at the same level as the others. And we want them to improve and connect with those students the same way our top notch teachers are. I want to see improvement in our athletic programs. We have the best facilities, we need to have the best teams that will highlight those facilities. My biggest concern is the arts, um, I believe Ashley mentioned that too. Um, we need more support for them. I love seeing the murals in the hallways. I love hearing that our band and choir numbers are starting to rise again. Um, I'd love to see marching band, jazz band, show of wire. I was very disappointed that the class of twenty-three had no opportunity to perform a player musical. And the way it sounds things are going right now, the class of twenty-four will also get that opportunity. And it's very disappointing. There are kids that thrive and that's the setting of on and off the stage, and they're being denied that opportunity.
Thank you, Dawn. Alright, I accidentally closed the thing, so that's fine. I mean, it wouldn't be Lindsay if I wasn't like, losing it every once in a while. Alright, Cody. So we talked about initiatives, we talked about challenges, but what are ways that you have supported our Colfax Mingo students, teachers, and community already?
Uh, we have a daughter that's a sophomore here and she's in band and golf. And so we've supported those, those individually through fundraisers and things that they've promoted throughout the, the last year. Corporately, weekly, uh, we, and, and when I say we, as a, a church, have a meal weekly for the kids and families, free meal on Wednesday nights, uh, and, and the community's invited to that. And then we just wrapped up the cellar, if you're familiar with the cellar, uh, after home games, home football games, we open up the basement and, uh, the, any youth in the, in the community can come and have pizza and, and a meal, play games, just sit around, visit, have a safe, uh, safe place on Friday nights. So we're always looking for ways to encourage those safe environments for the community, and that's how we support them.
Thank you, Cody. Jim, what are ways that you have supported our Colfax Mingo students, teachers, and community so far?
When my children are younger, I helped coach youth basketball and baseball programs. I coached high school basketball and substitute taught in the district for twenty-eight years. I was a member of the Colfax Mingo Booster Club, helped fund raising events for student activities. I volunteered for prom and homecoming events. I donated labor and equipment for the CMFA. Was a member of the Colfax JCs and the Colfax Men's Club to help raise money for community events. And I donated time and equipment for the current main street to, recently was to move facilities up for the bike ride, with reg ride this summer.
Thank you, Jim. Kendra, what are ways that you have consistently supported our CM, students, teachers, and community?
Um, I've been a part of the community in a variety of ways over the years. Um, have helping plan Mingo days for a lot of years, um, serving as an EMT in the Mingo Fire Department for a while. Um, being part of Mingo Hometown Pride and doing a lot of visioning in Mingo. Um, no longer EMT and the Hometown Pride meetings are the same night as the school board meetings, so they've kind of got cut it out of there. Um, but I've been on the board for two years now and I attended, um, meetings regularly before that, um, trying to get communication, transparency, to understand what we're up against and what's going on. Um, I've also coached Little League softball this past year. Um, and then through some, um, encouraging and, and suggesting, got my husband to coach, uh, baseball and youth football for the last couple of years. Um, and I also want to say, he's been on the city, Mingo City Council and Mingo for over fifteen years. And stuff like that doesn't happen unless you have another parent at home with the kids. So that was me too. Um, but yes, always looking for opportunities to serve the community. Oh, and Wednesday Night Youth is, uh, I started this year, so.
Thank you Kendra. Betty, what are ways that you have already supported our Colfax Mingo students, teachers, and community?
One, I, um, have helped out with reg ride events with our church. I'm very active in church. I, um, am this entrepreneur, I'm a good fundraiser. Join me, we'll, we'll make money. Um, helping, um, with, with a new bus for our church, helping with a new sign out in front of our church. I have made soup and for fallies, I have made chili for, uh, football games. I have done the homecoming meatburger supper. I support the band, I do all kinds of, uh, anything with food and money, I'm definitely there for you. Um, I, anything that anybody needs, all I have to do is mention and routinely I volunteer to help.
Awesome, Betty. Well, I'm always down for food and money, so. Maradell, what are ways that you have already supported our students, teachers, and community?
I've served, served on the school board four terms. Helped with homecomings, proms, field trips, negotiations with teachers on Dollars for Scholars Vice President. Current president of Colfax Women's Labim Club, served on superintendent search committees.
Thank you, Maradell. Jen, now, everybody's going to know in about a second, but she is, uh, on my pie board, so Jen, what else do you do?
Thank you, Wendy.
As I mentioned, I started volunteering in my daughter's classrooms last year. So I help the kids with their math and their reading when I go in there and volunteer. As Lindsay just mentioned, did a plug for me. I'm on the board of pie. I'm dugout mom for my daughter's softball teams. I'm also a Sunday school teacher at our church. And I help with the Vacation Bible School program in the summer for the Catholic Methodist and Christian churches.
Thank you, Jen. Ashley, what have you already done to support our Colfax Mingo students, teachers, and community?
Well, we haven't been in the district long. We lived in Colfax since 2011, but our children didn't go to school here until 2020. So in the short three and a half years we've been here, I think I helped Patrick Oates, I don't know, coach every possible sport that our second graders play in together. We've coached baseball, T-ball, basketball. Thankfully, others took over football. That would be not fun. I've also, to get the community involved this year, I organized the Sports Drink and Water Drive donation. You probably saw it down the fairway to support our football players. And we have a lot of that left. So thank you to all the people that donated. Worked with Denise to make sure all of our teammates were fed after our football games. We also did something new this year and making sure our boys were all fed before any away football games. And the long day of school with school lunch and then a long bus ride. So we always made sure they had a little snack on their way to those away games. I also have helped coach my daughter's basketball team. I'm always open for donating anything needed for the classroom, whether it be supplies, stuff for ball parties or spring parties or pictures or whatever is needed. So I'm always happy to volunteer my time.
Thank you, Ashley. Mary, what have you done to support our Colfax Mingo students, teachers, and community?
As I walked in tonight, I went, darn, we should have sold popcorn. You know, popcorn makes good money for the booster club. I've worked at the booster club for years and years and years. So that's one way that I've been really involved. I also, because my husband's a councilman, I always try to encourage cooperation. I did a lot of swimming lessons for many years and thank goodness now Jim Bob has taken over that role as well. I want to be a listener and listen to people with concerns as we go forward. I'm on the Colfax Library Board, so we've always talked with the school to see if there's anything we can do and encourage that. Just being on the past board for the past few years, it's been great. I make regular donations, so if you, if clubs or whatever need something or classroom teachers. The other day I dropped something off down to the nurse's office and she says, you know those little deodorant things like you get when you travel? She goes, those are something we could really use. So if you have any of those around, those little deodorant things, they need those down at the school. I've also lobbied for the school, for the district. I've gone to the legislature, spoke in front of the Education Committee. I've met with our legislators. And I've also written to letters to them. So I think that's something that's maybe not seen, but I've made sure that I knew that and I would encourage you as well.
Thank you so much, Mary. Patrick, what have you done, I've heard your name a couple times. What else have you done to support our students, teachers, and community?
Yeah, so being on the school board, I get the opportunity to grill for all of the teachers. And I don't think we've had anyone sick the last couple of years, so I'm going to call it a win. Also just donating time to answer questions and listen to feedback. So we get lots of emails as board members and always responding and making sure to pass on feedback and working with our administration. At the student level, it's mostly as a coach. But I will say, I'm also on the Corey Springs Park Board with Kim Sebeck in attendance. So I help run the social media site. So I was complaining about social media, but I also use it a lot. So, yeah, we're good. But we partner with the park for fifth grade outings. We do education out there. We also have a kids fishing derby that I've helped coordinate. We've had a paddle skedaddle where we offered free entry to Colfax Mingo students. So coordinated with them for kayaking and running out in the quarry. And then obviously endless coaching of youth sports.
Shannon, what have you done to support our students, teachers, and community?
So I'm not going to read a long list, but I really admire all of you. I think coaching, volunteering at the school. We have four kids, so a lot of times we divide conquer and some PT coaches and I stay with the kids. And it just depends on what the activity is. I think that especially because the kids are so busy, we really want to focus our time and effort in our free time on the things that we think are going to be the most impactful. And that's why I want to be on the school board. I want to focus my time there and spend my time volunteering and making impact there.
Dawn, what have you done to support our students, community, and teachers?
So when my kids were younger, I helped with the Colfax Community Preschool, countless field trips for the elementary, youth sports, was a coach or assistant for them, Cub Scout leader and a team PSYAC committee. Led a mission trip for the Baptist Church. And was on the community committee for the hiring of superintendent. Currently, I am in Chapter B A P E O, music boosters, athletic boosters, Colfax Mingo scholarships. I helped with the plus prom committees as co-chair for 21 and 23. And also like to help out with attracting cross country.
Thank you, Dawn. That was a lovely list. Melissa, what have you done to support our students, teachers, and community?
My husband and I moved back to Colfax two and a half years ago. So in that time, I have been on the Main Street promotions board. So I help with the country Christmas and the whole spring days, farmers markets. I volunteer my time to come to school in the evenings and weekends to help my husband do maintenance around the old rebuilds. We participate in the farmers market. We have a little catering, a little barbecue business that we do on the side. We cater the conferences with high school and the elementary, the spring and pink. In the past, I have three older children and I coached in the PTA, which is pie here. And I look forward to getting back out this year and even doing all of that stuff going forward as well.
Thank you, Melissa. Pie will definitely take your time. We meet on the first Tuesday of the month. All right. Jim, what roles, if any, should districts assume for dealing with such societal problems such as poverty, hunger, emotional illness, and drug abuse?
Thank you for giving me this question.
Uh, you know, it just worked out that way.
Yeah, I know. This question, I really struggled to come with an answer. There's so many issues facing our district, our community, and families within them. Schools have resources available to address these issues and community problems. The main focus of the district is to identify these issues. A few of the issues facing our district are free and reduced breakfast and lunch are available to those families who qualify. And I think currently we have about 40% of our families have free and reduced lunches. Staff administrators are trained to identify emotional and drug uses, drug use issues. Students' parents need to be contacted and referred to programs to help either in their home, either through home counseling or state assistance programs. Districts are responsible, given by law enforcement agencies, if they feel there is a issue of students harming themselves or other students or staffs. Students have accessibility to programs to protect social problems within the community.
Thank you, Jim. Kendra, what do you view is the district's role to assume responsibility for dealing with social problems like poverty, hunger, emotional illness, or drug abuse?
It's a really tough question because it involves so much more than the school. This school is supposed to be where kids go to learn and play and it's become so much more. I think we need to focus on creative and comprehensive approaches. We have some great resources for dealing with these things, including our counseling staff, a behavior interventionist, at-risk staff. And most of the other staff are doing what they can, a community liaison. But it's reaching out and partnering with those other organizations that are trained in handling these problems because not all of us, the staff, is. And I think the most simple way to do that is forming connections. Or the simplest way to prevent some of these things that doesn't cost money is also forming connections with kids. That's what, you know, helps with mental illness, being involved. The more we think, provide students to connect more than just in class, the better. We started doing that, I think more opportunities through like new clubs, robotics, the gaming club, different things like that. And those ideas are coming from teachers. So it's listening to what the teachers' ideas are on those things too. And possibly students as well. They aren't helpless, you know, they have an opinion also. But it's something greater than just the district. Our city and our state makes an impact on that too. And they're the ones that are going to have to, we can support them through housing initiatives, you know, food pantries, trying to get businesses in the communities as well. So no easy answer here and we can only do so much as a school district.
Thank you, Kendra. I wanted to talk about plugging and working essentially towards mentorship, which reminded me that we just started our teammates program. Y'all, I am shameless for a good plug. So if you did not see our teammates post on Facebook the other day, please go look for that. We are absolutely looking for ways that we can support these kids more than just from their teachers and the district. Betty, what are ways that you think the school should assume the role of dealing with these societal problems of hunger, homelessness, poverty, and drug abuse?
I think we need to gather a list of resources that we would be able to connect folks with. These problems come to your doorstep every single day. You don't know what the kid's situation is. I mean, a kid, if they haven't had a decent breakfast and their parent hasn't enrolled them for a free lunch or a free breakfast or whatever, they're going to be hungry. And they're not going to have the readiness to learn as the kid who does get the free breakfast or has their own breakfast and lunch prepared for them at home. And it's being sent because the parent does want to complete the paperwork. There's grants out there, there's all kinds of things, team challenges there. We can, you know, try to seek as many resources as we possibly can to be able to help these kids. Are we going to be able to help everybody all at one time? Absolutely not. This is a step-by-step progression to moving an organization, a school system, a school district, and outreach to people who truly need the, truly, truly, truly need the help. And we also need to have our eyes open and be able to identify and not just take a blind eye.
Thank you, Betty. Maradell, what role, if any, should districts assume in dealing with social problems like poverty, hunger, emotional illness, or drug abuse?
Monitor free and reduced lunches for needy families and make sure these programs are available to qualifying families. Student districts need to identify emotional issues and drug usage. Teachers interact at students on a daily basis. They should be trained to identify drug usage and mental health issues. Should be referred to students' guidance counselors to receive necessary assistance available. Counselors need to monitor their daily needs and decide what issues to address for their recovery.
Thank you, Maradell. Jen, what roles, if any, should districts assume for dealing with societal problems such as poverty, hunger, emotional illness, or drug abuse?
The school can only be a fair and just environment for kids. The school cannot fix the community's problems. Poverty can be fixed by properly educated students so they are marketable to employers and can get a good job to support themselves and their families.
Thank you, Jen. Ashley, what role, if any, should districts assume in dealing with societal problems such as poverty, hunger, emotional illness, or drug abuse?
I'm going to read my answer this time, if I miss some stuff on the last one. I think Colfax has taken a big step by creating that parent community lead position. My plug for Lindsay there. This allows our students that are dealing with these issues to receive the type of support that they need. Mental health and supportive services for our students and teachers are imperative to success. If a student isn't doing well mentally, physically, emotionally, or without having supportive services, we can't expect them to be doing well academically. It should be the goal of our district to assist where possible. I believe every student that enters our building deserves a chance to be successful. They deserve to be treated as an equal. They deserve to be treated with respect, no matter their situation. It is our responsibility as adults, as a district, as a community, to offer help when a student is in need. We can't expect success when we are offering all of the resources possible to help our students be successful.
Thank you, Ashley. Mary, what role, if any, should districts assume for dealing with social societal problems such as poverty, hunger, emotional illness, or drug abuse?
I think you need to take out the if any. Schools have been assuming these roles for years and teachers have been taking them on for years. But I think now we're cognizant as a community, as a school district, we have to deal with these. Children have to come to school ready to learn. We have to help them have the skills, have the resources to do that. COVID brought on a lot of different problems, but it also brought some opportunities for us to have more counselors and to look at ways to help kids. Teachers delivering meals, having meals throughout the summer. So I think that helped put more tools in our toolbox. But you have to be planful. You have to be planful in what you're doing.
Thank you, Mary. Patrick, what role, if any, should districts assume for dealing with such societal problems as poverty, hunger, emotional illness, or drug abuse?
Yeah, so I'll just call out, if you were at our last board meeting, you heard Superintendent Salmon talk about, we have homeless children in our district. In our district. Did I mispronounce it? Yes, Solomon, thank you. But I mean, this is no laughing matter. We have homeless children in our district. And he talked about how the school is supporting them. And so we need to find ways for the community to help and raise awareness of it. Because I'll be honest with you, I didn't know that. And I'm shocked, to be honest with you. Because I don't always see it, but it's the children too. So we have kids that are hungry, we have kids that are homeless. How can we help? Because I know that Colfax can go when people ask for help, we deliver. So I do feel like we need to find ways to get those people connected with the school and the community resources to find ways to give the community to help those people more in line. And that's a local issue. That's not just a public issue, or excuse me, a state or nationwide issue. Like, that's right here at home. So I'd like to see us work with you more on setting up those types of programs, Lindsay.
Shannon, what, if any, should our districts assume for dealing with societal problems such as hunger, poverty, emotional illness, or drug abuse?
Yeah, I think that we have an obligation as a district to make sure that we have a safe learning environment for any child who needs food. Like we, everybody had mentioned, we have a lot of programs, you know, breakfast, free reduced lunch. We have mentoring programs. We have a lot of things going on. And I know my kids have personally benefited from the counselors that we have on site.
from the counselors that we have on site. I think one thing that we could focus on more as far as emotional well-being is how are we supporting our teachers? And how are we making sure that we're not overloading them with all of the extra things? And do they feel supported? Do they feel valued? You know, and prioritizing their mental health as well.
Thank you. Dawn, what role, if any, should our school districts play in assuming and dealing with societal problems such as poverty, hunger, emotional illness, or drug abuse?
Students in these situations need more support. The stress added by enduring these hardships just takes its toll on them. And it really puts things into perspective. As Patrick mentioned, we found out at the last board meeting about the homeless children in our own district. These students have to work harder to get the same score as somebody who doesn't have these same things on their minds. Colfax Mingo schools offer stability to these students. We offer emotional support, food, a chance to do laundry, a shower. These are things the school is currently doing, and we need to continue that. The approval of the teammates program is one way we are hoping to provide more support. Being able to provide programs for drug abuse or emotional support is one of our end goals as a current board. But we need to pay for these services through grants or figuring out funding in some way or another.
Melissa, what role, if any, should our schools play in dealing with societal problems such as poverty, hunger, emotional illness, or drug abuse?
Okay, so for poverty, I know we have resources currently for parent students that need or want help. Maybe sending that list home to every student so it's available. Some people are afraid to ask for help. Hunger, we have the free reduced lunches, breakfast, the backpack bags from the church. There's the Home on Fridays. Those are all great, and I think they should continue. Emotional illness. Someone said earlier that we've got a bunch of counselors with the COVID money. And I feel like we need to make it more common to talk about people's emotions. People are scared to speak about it. It's pushed under the rug, and then we have bigger problems down the road. These kids and adults seem normal to some. Other people notice it and try to do something, but one person can't. It's got to be a maybe. And was it Tom, the motivational speaker that we had last year? I think we need to do more of that. Message he gave was amazing. With my job, we go to a 303 workshop twice a year, and they have a motivational speaker each time. And I thought that was amazing too. And funding, how to give them here and pay for it would be another obstacle, but that's what I think.
Thank you, Melissa. Cody, what role, if any, should school districts play in dealing with societal problems such as poverty, hunger, emotional illness, or drug abuse?
So the question is, what roles, if any, should the district assume? Here lies the problem. I've been hearing financial issues. I mean, that's the forerunner. So what is the district responsible for? Well, let's lump poverty and hunger together. You can have poverty and not hunger. And if somebody's hungry, they're going to get poverty. Is this the school district's responsibility? The role this district should play in this, I think, is minimal. There's a plethora of government programs out there to help those in need. Now, that's from a district's point of view. Now, on an individual basis, if I see somebody, if you see somebody that's hungry and start poverty, step up. Do something about it. It's our responsibility, not the district's. Let's take drug abuse. This district's role concerning drug abuse should be zero tolerance. Plain and simple. That's where, whether it's staff or students on that. Now, emotional wellness, what is that? This is a tough one. Does this range from, "I'm sad today, and so I'm emotionally ill"? Or does it come from serious depression and possible suicidal thoughts? Now, that's a mental illness. And for the serious and very mentally ill, this is above the district's and any school counselors pay for it. So our job should be to see that and then direct them to a professional. And that should be our point with mental illness. It's not a serious mental illness. If it's not, that turns into that gray area of emotional illness. And I'm going to pick on the wording here a little bit. See, I don't know what that is. Quite honestly, if a student or teacher, whoever that is, that feels like they're emotionally ill, I think they need to grow up and rub some dirt on it because the world's not fair and learn to deal with it if it's an emotional problem.
Thanks, Cody. All right, so we're going to finish up our closing statements, and I feel like I ignored this half the room. So we're going to start with Mary and we'll end with Patrick. I know you weren't ready for that, were you? Do you need a second? You're good. All right. Thank you, Mary.
I want to thank everybody for coming. And I want to remind you to go out and vote, not only in this election, but in all elections because all elections matter to schools, especially at the state level because that's where the majority of our funding comes from. Please support your children, your teachers, your administrators. Help your children. Help your neighbors' children be ready to come to school because it does take a whole village to raise a child. And if you see the needs, reach out, help. So get out there and vote.
That's a tough one to follow. I guess I've always had a passion for volunteering. I've tried to give as much time of myself as I could the past three and a half years we've been in this district. Tonight, I'm going to ask for a chance to volunteer the next four years of my time to our school district. A chance to represent you and a chance to represent our community. I just, I don't know. I really, obviously, I have a son graduating soon. So I really want my kids and all the students at Colfax, when they graduate, when they go out in the real world, to be proud of the district that they came from, to be proud of the experience that they've had here, and be proud of themselves for achieving something that not every student or child has the opportunity to achieve. So on that, I just want to build on the success we have in our district and be of service to our community, growth, and change the future. So I look forward to the opportunity to continue building a great Tigerhawk community.
Sure. All right. I get two votes. I'm running out of time.
Just in closing, through my involvement as a school classroom volunteer, dugout mom, Pi member, and community volunteer, there's room for improvement in some key areas. My daughters are my greatest motivation to make Colfax Mingo a top-tier school.
In my terms of a school board member, I've served as president, vice president. I've received four Better Boardsmanship Awards Iowa School Board Association. Never missed a board meeting in my 17 years as director. If re-elected, I promise to confront the needs and issues of the Colfax Mingo School District. Thank you for attending tonight, and be sure to vote on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you for listening to everybody's opinion and hearing us out and hearing our views. My parents, my biggest influencers, always told me, "You were put on this world to make it a better place." And that being said, I like to thank who I want my legacy to be. And my legacy, I would like it to be that I helped make the Colfax Mingo School District the best it could possibly be and be an advocate. And I can tell you, nobody would fight any harder for your children.
I would love to continue to be a school board member. I'm highly invested in the district. I'm excited about what we can become if we listen to each other and work together. And I believe I'm a good candidate because I have a couple years of experience now, so I sort of know what I'm doing. And I'm willing to listen. I'm not afraid to call out concerns or missteps. And I want the best for all the communities and the staff that make up our district. I think our board has worked very hard over the last few years. Only been here a while, it's been smoother than it has been in the past. I'm so excited to see so many people interested in the board and paying attention because for a while, it felt like we couldn't scream out to the community for anything and get any kind of feedback. So it was very difficult. I think we've made great strides, and I would like to continue doing that. Thank you.
No one board member can solve issues our school board faces. If elected, I pledge to work with other board members, administration, and staff to address challenging issues facing our district. Together, we can provide quality education to our students and make our schools accessible and accountable to our community. Every candidate here tonight's goal is to make Seum the best district it can be. Thank you for attending tonight, and be sure to vote on Election Day.
My passion perhaps stems from what I do and who I am. I'm a Christian, a conservative father who cares deeply for their children. And the public schools in America have been the victim of many agendas. And so as people are leaving the big cities and looking for a simpler, cleaner life in small-town communities, our school is going to grow. And so the real-world issues will be walking in through the doors. And it's going to be hard. But we must work and strive to those top, keep our education top-notch in a small-school setting.
Again, my answer is super short. Thank you for all coming out, and remember to vote. Like I said down there. I am an active listener. I love to problem solve. And I just want to serve my community.
I just wanted to thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank you, Lindsay, for hosting our forum tonight. It's been an honor serving you for the last four years. And I would just really appreciate the opportunity to have another term. Thank you all.
So I've only been doing this for about seven months, and I don't feel done yet. There's so many things that we've started. There's things that I want to continue to build on. I think if you're sitting here and you feel like change needs to happen in certain areas, that it's time for us to start to build on some of the great things that we have here to really look at our academic success, the safety of our students, and our overall extracurricular experience. Then I want to be there to help support you and represent you. I want to listen to you. I promise to listen to you to drive for those changes that we need as a district. So I would really appreciate the vote. Thank you.
My wife and I moved to Colfax in 2013, and we weren't sure what kind of school we were getting. I can say I work in Des Moines. I am a super proud Tigerhawk. I love talking to my parents that send their children to Ankeny, to Johnston, to Southeast Polk. We have just as good teachers, if not better. They get small classrooms. They get an amazing education. I cannot wait for my children to cross the stage and become Tigerhawk graduates because I know they're going to have a great education. They can do anything they want to do. And they can be anything that they want to be. And I would love to help this community grow and continue to continuously improve our school district because we're going in the right direction. I can hear it from the comments from my coworkers. They are super jealous of what we have going on here. So I just want to continue that and would love your vote on November 7. All right, November 7.
7th also has to be the night that we have Pi. In case anyone wonders. All right, so I want to first give thanks to our potential board members that all came tonight. It took time out of their week to read over these questions, come up with very thoughtful answers for all of you. And a big thanks to all of you for coming, for listening, for being open to what these amazing people have had to say. To those that joined virtually, we hope to see you in person next time. But we're grateful that you still tuned in. To Ben, where is Mr. Cooper? Thank you for setting all this up for us and Mr. Solomon for helping get this organized and all of that. Drive safe, and we hope to see you all at the voting polls on 7. Thank you very much.